I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of previous meeting. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes? Here are none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, as you can see, there's a few things that got added since the beginning. Who's approved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. First up, Steve.
The phone company backed out. An updated quote, but all over eighty-five hundred dollars. That's for the three on each floor and two over on the armory.
Upgraded Wi-Fi.
Upgraded Wi-Fi, yes.
And, yeah, they're ready to move all the old ones, is that correct?
The old ones will, yeah.
So nobody can plug into them after that thing?
Well, I guess it's two separate things, but I'll check to see what, if there's old stuff that needs to be repaired. For like, or.
Adam, is all right with the social service now?
I haven't asked him, but I would assume that since we're doing more than initially intended, I think he'll be happy with that.
Have you had any contact with him, Steve?
Yeah, I was, I know about the plan, yeah. We had, right after, right after the last meeting, or the meeting with NRG and social services and that area.
You were good with it?
I didn't hear any complaints.
I haven't had any calls.
No.
We have, we have a social service meeting tomorrow and I'll break it up if we make a decision, but I would assume I don't know why. Free or hours or three, free Wi-Fi up access points per floor should more than blanket the court house.
Well, and when, when plugging into the wired network, I think it's important when the room is reserved to let Nathan or Steve know or all that that's a requirement needed. And so, so Steve can make sure that that port is, is turned on. Because that is a different access, isn't it? Steve will, sometimes those are shut off, you know?
Is there a form they fill out, Candy? When they want to reserve a room, or is it just only verbal?
Um, no, it's just verbal.
Verbal?
Yeah.
That's the way to know.
But we already addressed that from when everything started. So when people schedule a bigger meeting or even just three people, we ask, you know, do you need any, do you need anything else? Do you need?
Some of the port issues too were on the NRG side because they were stuff that was linked directly to the, to their server, correct? Because like in the, in the social service offices where we were having issues too, they were ones that were hooked up through NRG, so they were gonna work on fixing them. They had the one dead one in the meeting room, but that one, that's been fixed. So we should have, we should have a problem going forward with that. And this should give really good access to, you know, everybody in the building that needs coming with Wi-Fi, so. What, what was the quote previously? Do you recall?
Yeah, forty-four seventy.
And this about doubles the number of access for.
Yeah, but four more access points and a lot, but, you know.
Labor costs one up.
More labor, more access points and additional. People are gonna need anyway the switches for left out of the way.
Okay. Further questions, discussion?
I want to make a motion for a head and approve purchaser, the quote from NDC.
Okay, there are a motion in a second to approve. Contractor pending MTC to upgrade the Wi-Fi, what up to the tune of eight thousand five hundred and thirty nine dollars and ninety cents. Further discussion on the motion. We're in a pay, we don't need to call, so all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Both stepped out of the room, he's over there. You always confuse me, you walk around there when you want to address us, but I don't know where you're at, they're hiding.
Well, good evening, everybody. I ask Candy to get on the agenda here. Joint Powers Agreement Regarding the Captain Position at the Jail. As you may or may not know, Ramsey County hired a captain to work in the jail. And I believe things have been going smoothly. I see Rob's in the back of the room. I was contacted by Howard Swanson, who's the counsel for the Law Enforcement Center. And we talked through a few things, so we both kind of agreed for our sake and for the Law Enforcement Center's sake, we just needed something maybe a little more formalized. So he put together this draft of a joint powers agreement. He was counseled for the city of Grand Forks for twenty-some years. It's a pretty stock agreement. I'm hoping you've had a chance to look over it. If you haven't, and you see anything that is of concern to you, please let me know. Otherwise, I hope you would invest some authority in me to make some desired changes. If there's things that need to be changed. Essentially, this just puts it on paper that he works for Ramsey County, who's responsible for what, and when they're responsible for it. When I looked through it, the only two questions I had that I think maybe need to be addressed. So we, as the county, paid him, but then would get reimbursement from the Law Enforcement Center. I guess I have some questions on how that process looks. And then the other question that I had when I read through this, it says that the agreement can be dissolved within X number of days by either party. I think we should make a change on that, whether it be weeks or months, just so we're not getting left high and dry. And so that everybody has enough notice to change or respond accordingly if one party decides to go the other way. That's really all I have. Rob, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so this was just initially drafted by Howard, who is representing the LEC. And, you know, I questioned the reimbursement of the salaries and benefits, how the whole intention is there. And we do have this on the agenda for the LEC board meeting tomorrow as well, like our board and the C E D. To go over some of those things as well. So it's, it's just trying to find, too, like, like Bo had indicated, make sure everyone's covered and we got all our base.
And this is just a really early draft. This is by no means the final, but it's, it's kind of a good working skeleton. They've used similar agreements in Grand Forks for a number of years and haven't had any issues that I know of.
So what do you think is a reasonable timeframe for termination agreement at three months?
I think that would be appropriate. I.
That was gonna be my question in reading through it was, you know, that's left blank and what do we think a reasonable timeframe is to be able to, if an unwind is to occur, you know, from the LEC side as well as the county side?
Well, and I, I don't wanna hang Rob out to dry, and that's not my intent, but say the LEC were to turn around and say, ah, this isn't working, we wanna terminate two weeks from today, you know, then that puts us on the hook two weeks from now, you know, so.
Three months.
I think three months is appropriate. I don't think the LEC would do that. I think it is working fairly well right now. I think this is a model that's used around the state with the exception of Pickens Town. So we're not the first to try something like this. We won't be the last. And I think this is just a good place to start, kind of get it down on paper, what both parties expect.
Further questions or comments from both? Give me some guidance.
I, I guess, I'm a little confused. So the termination of the agreement. That just agreeing to what? That the captain no longer is allowed back in the jail or?
And so, from my perspective, the plan of the agreement is to outline and define certain realities that need happen to be able to access information and services that the captain needs to do. It's just to establish that. So, cause currently, if he's not employed in Law Enforcement Center, yet he supervises Law Enforcement Center employees, so what information can he access? Can he access those employees' social security numbers? Can he access those, that, that contact information? That's privileged information. So to try and establish a joint powers agreement is the way that Howard recommended, we try to establish and make it where he falls under those, so he can access those, those types of things. But the agreement, I think, itself comes with where you have to have a termination or a hell clause or how, have that defined remain. I don't, again, I agree with both too, to where I don't see that that's gonna be an issue, but it still has to be in the document.
And we have it in here, right?
Yeah, it's just one term of many. And I know Captain Kraft isn't here, but this is also for his protection.
Right, absolutely.
So he knows who's paying him, what the expectations are, what he has access to. The LEC knows what they can give him. And so, and it's for us too, in case something were to go wrong, we could say, hey, here's what we agreed to. And I think there's some place, some stuff in place already. I know there's a memorandum of understanding between the board and Captain Kraft, but just a little more formal, I think, is probably the way to go on this situation. And I can work with Howard to kind of fine tune some points.
There's no question we want to keep under county sheriff.
I agree. That, that will be explicit in the agreement, that he's an employee of Ramsey County. He answers to the sheriff. And then as such, I guess we're financially responsible for him, and that's what comes with it, right?
Yeah.
Wasn't, was that the expectation that we'd get reimbursed from the LEC?
For his salary?
No, I didn't, I don't think so either. Alright, cause I didn't, Steve include that in his budget or did he?
Well, I think this is the start point of, you know, the discussion tomorrow at the LEC board meeting too, when this is shown to those board members to say, is that, was that the expectation that they're okay with that? Is it something where maybe we split or whatever? I mean, and I think that's where we, where the discussion though, this is a completely finalized, that comes in the playlist in my mind.
So, on that note, I was, I was thinking on this. So he is an employee of Ramsey County and we are financially responsible for him. But he, as in his capacity, he would be providing services to the other member counties of the LEC, and I think maybe that's where Howard wanted that reimbursement portion in there. I don't think that was ever an expectation. And so, if, if that's where we wanna dial in on things that need to get fine tuned, that's fine.
I, I, I guess in my, my thought process would be, you know, bring us feedback from what the other counties were thinking at tomorrow's meeting, and if they have a huge problem with it, then we'll, we can adjust accordingly. I mean, the expectation, I guess, when, when we went along with this agreement and decided it was something we were gonna do was, I was under the expectation, I guess, we were gonna end up paying. So if they're willing to take on the cost or at least a portion of it, then we work with the other companies and make it right.
I don't see any problem with the board on its agreement at all.
No, I, I mean, like I said, it's a lot of boilerplate type stuff. The other thing that may be worth looking at is the insurance portions of it. I think it's pretty well defined in there, who pays what, if something were to go wrong or somebody were to get hurt as far as liability. That being said, I'm not an expert in insurance law, so give you that little disclaimer. As always, if you have other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'll try to get back to you as soon as I can.
Okay.
And how about the benefits then? I mean, if we pay him or, does that, yeah, so who's gonna pay?
We'll pay in the county, we'll pay in everything.
Okay.
Do you see Ramsey County benefits that we receive? Money back, reimbursement.
Steve went to a meeting in Bismarck today, so our day of tomorrow, I guess, so. He couldn't be here today. He talked to me this morning, and he's not gonna be at the Law Enforcement Center meeting tomorrow, so. And everything's going fine. Talked to the DOC, and we're going back to fifty prisoners towards the end of this week. They're getting lifted on the ninety-six hour deal. There's some more paperwork they had to get down to, but look very favorable to go back to that, so. I wanted permission and all that, so. Everything seems to be going very smoothly with the jail.
He must have talked to me right after he talked to you.
Probably did.
Yeah.
Okay, further questions, discussion? Okay, there are none. I guess we'll wait till you're back from what occurs at the LEC meeting and finalize it if that can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Sandy and Brad. Afternoon.
Evening.
I'll send out five minutes, everybody. I'm Sandy Shadon, North Central Planning Council, and the executive director. North Central Planning Council is the North Dakota Region Three designated planning district. The Department of Commerce received about fifty-nine dollars in ARCA funds, and based on calculation, they allocated so much per region. Our region is eligible to apply for up to one million dollars with a twenty-five percent match requirement, so a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar match requirement to receive the whole one million. About April, I organized the economic development people in our region to try and muck with some projects so that we can apply for that funding. And it is to address, is the Regional Workforce Impact Program. And the projects, they want regional applications, and you can have more than one project, but they want the projects to address workforce needs in our region. And we all, we have workforce region, needs in our region. So with much discussion, we came up with two projects. The first one is to fund daycares. Access to daycares in the region is an issue, so we put out an RFP, request for proposals. We had six daycares respond to that RFP, and we decided that we would, we were the requests were over eight-hundred thousand dollars, but we had another project that we were working on, so we went, we're funding them in part. Some of them will be funded a hundred percent, less than twenty-five percent matched, and then others with a higher level of request worth funding in part. So we are requiring that the daycares provide their own match of twenty-five percent. And most of them are for expansion to increase the number of slots that they have available. And it would, it should increase the number of slots in the region by a hundred and ninety, the expansion that they're doing. The other project that we came up with is for a mobile career exploration unit. We've had a number of titles for it, but that's the one that we're sticking with. And we're looking at purchasing a van and retrofitting it with virtual reality equipment and simulation videos. And so that the and we're working with the schools and the students for career inspiration. We're looking at focusing on those jobs and careers that are in high demand in our region. We will be contracting with a job coach to operate that unit, and we're running it as a three-year pilot project. After three years, we'll collect our data and see if it's something that, you know, has worked out, we'll continue it, and if not, we'll just say, okay, we tried. And, but the, the thought is to work with junior and senior students and use the virtual reality videos and simulation videos to give them firsthand experience of different types of careers that are available. We will work with employers in our region, say Clements Road needs plumbers. And maybe we go into their facility, and we're looking at having up to thirty to fifty videos created. And then we will have subscriptions to already, there's entities out there that already have a bunch of career type videos available, so we'll have subscriptions. But say a plumber will go into Clements Road, have them, just for an example, and create a video, maybe do a walkthrough there, create the video in their facility of the type of work that a plumber would actually be doing. So the students would then be able to use the virtual reality and simulation equipment to experience that firsthand. The twenty-five percent match for that part of it ends up being ninety-seven thousand seventy-three dollars. We're using some in kind, but then we need cash match. And we're looking at the job authorities, the EDCs, counties, to gather all that match. And then the last thing would be business sponsorships, that we would approach businesses for sponsorships, and that would be after recruit. Our application is due at the end of the month. We were given a short turnaround to get all this developed, and we will move in September if we're funded. So the funding, they are not, the grant does not allow us to pay for operating, so the operating for the mobile unit, we cannot fund with grant dollars. We can pay for the equipment, the videos, the subscriptions, all of that, but we can't pay for operating. So that's for using the match dollars to pay for the operating. And Brad, do you have anything you want to add?
I've mentioned it a couple other times that I've been here, we're gonna go to the, go to the kids, we're gonna go to the communities. You know, when you, when you start calling off the names of towns across the region, you know, I didn't know some of them outside of Ramsey County, but you know, we're gonna be, you know, we got Leeds and Milwaukee, Cheyenne, Warwick, Addon, Starkwood, Munich, Camden, Edmore, Can Do, all that. Valla, I mean, I could go on and on. We've got a lot of those smaller communities. So that's where we'll be using it, going to the student, to the parents, and then a one-on-three or a one-on-four. A parent and a couple of parents and the student, we'll talk about the careers. But Sandy said careers, the careers that are available in our six counties. We're, we're pushing those careers, okay? Someone says they want to be a marine biologist, they probably could be, they're here at Devil's Lake, but I don't think we need fifty of them, right? I don't think we need five of them. It's, it's the careers that we have in our region, so the businesses will want to sponsor kids that will be plumber or auto mechanic. Or maybe an engineer, I think we have enough of them. But, but you know, those type of jobs are what we're trying to get filled, and to fill that pipeline with potential workers. There's programs galore from the state and, and job service that we aren't getting out of them. We can cover thirty thousand dollars on a thirty-five thousand dollar dental hygiene program, you know, potentially. We can do that for welders and for diesel technicians, you know, those type of jobs, so. That's the idea. It's ARCA dogs to do it. Adam, you're on the Ford Devil's Lake board, you know, we're trying to get everyone happy and supportive as much as we can. We get a lot more dollars coming from the bid government through the ARCA dogs than the dogs that are being used for match, but Sandy's done a wonderful job. You get six counties trying to agree on something that will benefit all of them. That was a challenge for her. This one, you know, we'll probably benefit more. When I say we, I'm looking at Ramsey County. Cause why? We have a lot of the employers. But if we can get a kid from Leeds and keep him in the area, he's working in town, or we can get a kid from Munich, or we can get a kid from Starkwood, all those. And then further out, that helps the region as well. So that's the idea, the intent. Going back to the childcare center, four of the childcare centers are around County, the other two are outside the county. So we're benefiting heavily there, so. So Ford Devil's Lake has committed some dollars, and we're trying to each county to commit as well.
Ford Devil's Lake put in what?
We put in, we've got fifteen committed for the first year and twenty and twenty for the second year.
Have you approached these other county commissions?
We, we were in Milwaukee last night.
Okay, how'd it go?
Went well. They want, they want the tribal authority to kick in too for Ramsey County. So we've got a call there. Rockford, Eddie County is in, Evallier County's in, Towner County's in.
Rolet County? You mentioned Rolet, Rob.
There's a reason why I asked for more money from Ford Devil's Lake, and we knew that Rolet would have trouble because they're early here.
But approach them.
Yeah, we're gonna still approach them. We're gonna still approach the tribal group up there as well, so. The intent is to try to get everybody on the same sheet of music and, and understand what we're trying to do.
Absolutely. Yeah, like that.
Adam, you were in the discussion with Ford Devil's Lake, you know, we had a unanimous vote for our seven board members for it. It's an attempt. You guys have heard me talk about the twenty-twenty program, try to get, we're using those same type of programs. But we're gonna go to the schools in a very expensive, high-tech, off-the-grid van. It's gonna have logos on it, it's gonna look like NASCAR. It's gonna be exciting for kids. We're gonna use that attempt, so there's marketing here with this as well.
You're on the right track.
It's another way to try to sell things like the twenty-twenty program, where instead of having them come to us, we're gonna try to go to them. And then hopefully we keep them here, and then they have some of those kids developing here.
We're gonna have job positions lined up with those programs. And North Dakota has an apprenticeship program and their career builders program, so we're gonna try to utilize all of those to keep the students here. Chances are, by the time they get their junior year in high school, they've already decided if they're going to college or not, and you know, if they go to college, not many of them come back, so we wanna get them early on, junior high, early in the high school years, and try to get them. I'm interested in careers that are here already.
That are here, that's the key. Now, at the same time, if we have a student comes in, wants to learn about something that we don't have that job here, I don't think we're gonna just kick him out of the van, obviously, we're gonna work with them, but.
Well, like we were talking about at the last Ford Devil's Lake meeting, there's jobs in town here that are four-year degree jobs and things like that too. We need those people. I mean, we have fantastic junior colleges that we need people who have continually worked at it, so there's gonna be all kinds of opportunities, but just selling the region basically, they can.
President, President Darling stated, we're back to the eighties with the book movie. I mean, the book movie, I remember as a young kid in the seventies, that book movie, down in Barnes, Minnesota, it was a pretty big deal, you know? This is a higher level version of that, obviously, but we are calling, so. That's why we're looking for your support and requests that Sandy has.
Did you mention Nelson County?
No, they're not in our region.
They're not in your region?
No.
They're not in our region, but I got a feeling the van will go through there. You know, and I've talked with the people in Nelson County. I mean, our work shed is, you guys know how far it is, you've got employees, I'm sure, coming sixty miles. Those people are probably Africa, you know, so we're gonna go out and we'll use it as an event, a marketing type piece, so. The operation part, a lot is gonna be on Ford Devil's Lake and myself, but, you know, as we've got a lot to keep gained by this, I was just kind of reaching into the area.
And, and all you're asking for, and all you're asking for is a commitment to five thousand dollars per year for the next three years.
That's right.
And a letter of support.
And a letter of support. Hey, well, I appreciate the low number. I'm just wondering why we waited till after budget. The United Budgets for all the political subdivisions and the county was due, you know, we approved it at our last meeting, yeah. Brad, you're well aware of, of that and?
We had, we, we had the problem, we didn't have the package put together till, till now. The Department of Commerce had a long time to get the dollars from ARCA to wind up, but by the time we got it, Sandy's done.
Well, and, and talking in our Ford Devil's Lake meetings, it's, you've been talking about it for months, but it's been taking time to put the numbers together, everything like that, and there is still, if I'm, if I'm covering, if I'm covering wrong, but there's a possibility that there's gotta be some money peeled back from other regions too. We'll still have match dollars, but there might be some more dollars out there too, because there's some regions that don't have their plans. Plans. They're, they're leaving money on the table, so there might actually be some more dollars out there, and we might need that still, but it's, yeah.
Would, would that start this year then, for, for the five thousand dollars, if the match or the grant comes through?
So the first year, if we were awarded, we would probably find out in September, and the grant funds have to be expended by June of twenty-twenty-three. So the first grant period is nine months essentially, and then the, it would go the next two years beyond that.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Well, and then really the only thing that we wouldn't be unbudgeted for would be the initial five thousand. So we can get the, the rest.
That's why, you know, perhaps on Ford Devil's Lake, that's why we made the commitment. We're, we're making up shortfall from some of the other counties.
Well, that's real, yeah. Well, like, like I said to Brad, I said, I think since she's been at Ford Devil's Lake, I don't think there's ever been an ask from Ford Devil's Lake for more money from the county. I think we've been at basically fifty-five thousand for six years or something like that, so.
This is additional here.
I, I won't be here, I won't be here next year when you come asking for a hundred grand, I won't be here.
Leave it at that, yeah.
Leave it on me.
I apologize for the late notice. Our estimates and stuff, we've been waiting from potential contractors to get estimates back. That's taken us quite a while, so we really just got our budget put together.
How far away is this ban? Maybe it'll take a year to get it or?
No.
She said, no, I mean, we're squeezing time here. I mean, we've got to get order a van. We've got a company that's in the Moore Park area, Banham Van.
Oh, okay.
You all know Ben, I'm Delison. So that's one of the first people we contacted. He's holding some inventory for projects that he had. He's holding one for us. So, you know, we've got a lot of moons that have to align to get this money spent and get it up and started, but.
And you can, you can find out in September if the grant would be approved?
Yes, hopefully we'll find out.
And if it's approved, we'll be able to get the money behind them, then then you can give them the go-ahead and get rolling.
It's gonna move quickly. I've had two, three people that we've talked to as part-time job coaches. Here's truly, he's been doing that job coach with the twenty-twenty. I'm committed to doing it. We've got time for me, for the board to do it. But we've gotta have three, four or five people that can go out and talk with parents and also talk with businesses. So it's not an easy job coach role.
Yeah, here's the people that, you know, are on the van.
And what did, what did Scotty contractors, they didn't have software or, you know, benefits. So they went to purchase the van, purchase equipment, purchase the software license, virtual reality. And it'll be marketing and it'll be recruitment.
But the equipment is such that we could actually get the subscriptions and start even before we have the van. So it, you know, they can load it up in their own personal vehicle and go to where they need to.
Yeah.
This is, felt like a very good project.
I'd go ahead and make that motion and we'd go along with the proposal of the support for the three-year commitment to five thousand dollars each year, along with a letter of support supporting the project. I mean, that's a nice job, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Where we're gonna take the money over the first year, first, first quarter money?
I think so.
All good there? We have a motion and a second to approve five thousand dollars over three years. First five thousand kind of approved funds and a letter of support for the project. Further discussion? Hearing none on favor?
Oh, wait, with our auditorium?
Yep.
I didn't see your nod, sorry. She's writing?
No, I'm not writing.
I can't wait to see the van. I, I think that'll be really cool.
Oh, yeah. You may as well go in too. It's, it's kind of accessible.
I want to see the first kid to go in there.
Have you shown them any mockups? Have you seen the mockups? You'll have to show them the mockup sometime.
I don't know, it wasn't good.
No, don't talk to Brad, it's really not, fresh, not good. Some of the ideas are already used, it's got to be the next.
I'm waiting to see if, I hope it comes to fruition.
Try it out. I hope we get it done by the time.
Okay, any clue with this? Hearing none on favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks to you for all your hard work.
Kevin?
Yes. I'll start off with, I guess we'll just do an update on the Ramwood project. I'm very close with our grab on Ramsey four. I think we'll start the end of last week or this month. Then the other one we got going is a gravel on ten for Gower. And there were, there are deadlines too, so we should be starting soon. That's about it for projects. All you guys thinking on that?
I'm sure Ramsey three, we ended up real close to the original bid price on that, even though we had those incentives to bail. You know, I had a few items we eliminated down there. And a couple, a little bit of under run on some of the quantities. So I think we're gonna end up within just a few thousand dollars of the contract price. So that's what number four has got paid here, so. The only work I have left to do is the stuff to do the seeding for the new curves, for the new ADA ramps. And then before the PSC plan was submitted, August fifth, the motion was on track for all bid opening for the Fox Culver dot twenty-four. That's it.
So we have, we don't have the dates set for our October, eight, yeah, for time sets usually. For the federally.
I was gonna ask you about that.
We're still working on, when we meet with federal highway, I think October at the April Ward mansion.
Currently it's a two o'clock on the October third, but besides the last competing, which was the other three thirty. That'd be one of those too.
I, I got a very positive comment on Tony three, I think they said it's very, very good. So the paving job was very, very good. They were very appreciative, so.
Awesome.
The ride is nice.
Yeah, that's what they said, the ride was fantastic, so.
Yeah, you can go way too fast on it.
Well, let's, just send a deputy up there, make some money. Make it to the schools, I guess.
It's gonna be very, very fast on the floor.
It is really.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Okay, well, then I have is, we'll take, need to take quotes for chips for next year. Not exactly sure of the cost, but it's gonna be around forty-six to fifty thousand. Food group.
Okay, we have motion and a second to, we're advertising for bids or quotes or?
Uh, just call for quotes.
Just gonna call for quotes, okay. So we got a motion and a second to have Kevin call for quotes for our chip seal project next year. Further discussion of the motion? Hearing none on favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries.
That's all I have, just to have something to read.
Yeah. And the county team of lots up there, we had Starlight two, locked a bunch of trees down.
Yeah, Sandy left it. Yeah, see, those are those lots that theme about, we're not supposed to be doing any shows.
Trees are affecting wires? I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it either, to be quite honest. But the wires, I don't know, I was gonna talk to the power company about that. I think that's kind of their issue really, to be quite honest. It's a, trees are in the way of your yard, there's a power pole, they, they usually come take care of them, so. But I'll talk to the power company.
We're not supposed to do anything because they're?
Right, they know.
Yeah.
They're supposed to go back to nature.
Yeah, the conservation is, the lady that's active, she's doing the whole one.
Yep, she does. She keeps them up next. I mean, she's not supposed to, but we don't. I don't know, I mean.
I won't say her name. I got your trouble.
Quite honest, I go along, it's very, very, very.
Well, you can't blame somebody if they live next door, they don't want a big, you can just ask her next to them, you know? Be like, if you just decided to go and walk out your yard or something. Wouldn't be very good, but.
That's Otter Tail or what? The Otter Tail in Penn or Novak?
We've got some.
Uh, I think it's might be, I, I know I'm on Novak.
Otter Tail's south of Penn, but I, I am pulling on it. Otter Tail got the truck stuck south of Penn, we don't pull it out, so I can't go in the blur line.
You're gonna talk to them?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, anything else for?
Yeah, I need to get back to her about that too. I haven't talked to her.
Well, just we can connect with the right people, we'll forget it clean up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Excuse me. Okay, new business, Andy Pur's information. I don't know what the doctor, just give us one to everyone. We just need a name. Uh, probably better, just to be clear. You got one? So basically, Brian's in the back, if we have any questions for him. But following our discussion previously and remaining it to Andy Pur's as that, as our employee, being a twenty-twenty employee for the years in question, they came back with a dollar figure. And the total dollar figure is hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Of that, the total contribution amount was, over the years in question, was fifty thousand two twenty fifty-two. And then the interest that was gained on all of those was sixty-one thousand two thirty-three fifty-three. So save for retirement, because compounding interest is a fantastic thing. So basically what it comes down to in Brian's discussions with the employee, they agreed to pay their contribution, correct?
Verbally, yeah.
Verbally, yes, as was discussed previously. So off of that one twenty-three, and twenty-four eight, twenty-seven eighty-four would come off. So then the balance for Ramsey County to cover would be ninety-eight seven nineteen thirty. And then we would cut, when, when that check was cut to us, we could cut one check in basically and we could take care of it. The question at hand, the question at hand is, I guess, a little twofold. One, in visiting with Candy, where do we take, where do we take the money from? Because we're, we made the decision to go this route, so where do we take the money from, one? And then two, at least in my opinion, and this is for a discussion with the commission as a whole, we should have Bo come up with some type of a, just a document that says, you know, by paying this, we're, you know, settled up or whatever. I would assume we need something like that, just we have some kind of documentation for it.
Well, like a, like a one-pager kind of release that put an HR folder or something.
Essentially, yes, just to say we settled up on this and no further action will come of this and.
I mean, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, you pay your part, we'll pay our part, we'll take care of it.
I don't, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, really, we don't.
We don't have a choice. We have no documentation to, to not do it.
Pretty huge blunder, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Candy did reach out to Hender, and they said.
Yeah.
They're free of it. They, they verbally told her that if we had got into a lawsuit, they would have covered it for us. But to me, that seems kind of acidized, but that's how they structured it, I guess, which is. I don't know, I'm not, again, I'm not an insurance guy, but that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But regardless of what they said or did, this is the number that we have to figure out how we're going to pay them. Because we have decided that that individual was a twenty-twenty employee. We've got to cover it, otherwise we are in a rear stupor at that point. In talking with Candy, we've got a couple options. Since the state's attorney had an assistant, so was the second assistant state's attorney on budget. And that was one of those dollars have just been sitting there the whole year and haven't been spent. We can use the balance of that. You anticipate you can have anybody hired before the end of the year? Probably not, probably not. So we have seventy-five thousand dollars right there from the state's attorney's budget that could roll right over to this. And then we could take the balance from the general fund or COVID dollars or whatever the balance is. So is it a lot? I mean, it's not fun having to pay that dollar figure, but at the end of the day, it's, we, we have a way to cover it without blowing up, taking all the budget or driving down the general fund in horrible manner.
I have a question. So that would be, if we took the full salary of the third state's attorney, that means I couldn't hire somebody until July of next year, correct?
No, January one.
January, yeah.
January one?
Yeah, and, and we don't have to take that whole thing. If you think you can have somebody possibly hired by November one, we could just take.
I don't think, you know, it's kind of slim pickings across the state in my.
Until somebody gets, until they get new, new lawyers graduating out of us.
Yeah, we're probably looking after February, I haven't heard this.
Hey, and you're, you're still actively looking, searching?
Absolutely, we have pulled things out.
Oh, I, I can't remember. It's been about fifteen years.
You know, I think that'd be reasonable to take.
One year.
I, I think it'd be reasonable to take it out of Bo's budget with, with him understanding that if he was able to find a candidate that would be hireable for that position that he's looking for, that he'd go ahead and hire that and not wait till the first of the year.
Yeah, but if you, if you find somebody that's interested and is qualified and you're comfortable, we can hire them and we'll figure out how to.
Right.
But a better understanding, instead of saying that it's gonna come out of his budget, so.
Just come out of general?
Just do miscellaneous general, then whatever balances are remaining from any general fund budgets, we'll just roll into, back into that pot.
Because the state's attorney's budget is a, is a general fund budget. So it'll just automatically roll back at the end of the year. So, but it, I guess I should have, yeah, you did it back, obviously, again, that I did.
So it, it's just something for me to watch where numbers are at the end of the year, closing books.
But hopefully we'll have enough people around your budget, we should be able to cover it.
There's quite a few, I mean, mine comes up with lost ten thousand all the time.
So I, I don't know if I've ever seen the department come in over. Very rarely, you know, maybe Kevin on, on occasion, but that's usually a disaster type of situation or something like that.
A skyrocketing asphalt price or something, that means I have a budget or something of that nature.
Yeah.
I don't have a choice, it is what it is, so.
I heard of the bridge.
I have another question.
Illegal that.
When do we have to pay off first?
I, I just, I think I read someplace with pay, like actual payable files, which there, it appears that's what they're treating this as on their website, is a file and it's, it's got to do, that you have like twenty days after, kind of a payday, so.
Is there a payday?
Yeah, it's the, I wonder where the statements, uh.
We want the interest to kick in again.
Plus it's August twenty twenty-two, so.
It says, this, this copy was made eighth eleven twenty twenty-two, so basically by the end of the month.
So is that the date that her portion is also due by?
But Andy Pur's don't care. They, they didn't just want that amongst, yeah. He always said, tell to us how we deal with the employee and get their.
They want the one twenty-three.
Yes.
Right.
And that comes from us.
Maybe this isn't the forum to ask it, but I'm going to. The employer cannot pay the employee's contribution based on our discussions and application of laws, is that correct? Brian? The employee has to pay their own portion of it.
Well, right, yeah.
But it's, it's on us as to how we get that, right?
Right.
But this is a, you know, a special circumstance comparatively to your normal payable question, so.
We don't pay it until she pays enough. Pays enough for her share.
I think that's reasonable, since she has at this point verbally stated to us that she is willing to pay her portions. I think we, we.
She, oh, she meant.
Communicate with her and say that we would like to have that check previous to the thirty-first of the month of a document that says accordingly something to that nature and that everything is free and clear at that point, then we cut the check out on the thirty-first or pay through at the end of the month. I, I know you guys have to figure out exactly how that'll function, but.
So the only reason I'm asking is fifteen days isn't exactly a lot of time to get twenty-five thousand dollars together. My conversation with the employee on Friday was, who do I write the check out to? Okay, maybe we're. Okay.
Okay. There's no thirty-day extension from the state, I would guess, so.
I, I didn't have that in my, that conversation with, with anybody from Andy Pur's.
I think it was. She don't do that, Brian, go, go around with that.
So I, I guess we would need a motion, where to take the money from and then probably to, uh, we're looking for. I can't, I know my mind is, yeah, but have staff work together to coordinate the payment from the employee as well as a, a document stating as such by the end of the month.
I'll make that motion then.
I'll cycle it.
And it would be money from the general and then have Brian and Bo and Candy kind of work together to make sure we get it handled by the end of the month. Okay. Further discussion on the, the motion in a second, correct?
Right.
Further discussion on the motion?
We're going back twenty years of correctness.
Yep.
Twelve-year period from two dollars five to two dollars seven.
Okay, further questions? Hearing none? I guess we're not paying any expenses. On favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries. Okay. Visitors and delegations. Crickets. Announcements, anyone have an announcement?
Just what I talked about at the jail, anything else, Jack, yet?
No, I think, I think Steve was really happy with, uh, the, the results of the progress that's been made in the hires in the correction office. Um, and moving that upgrading us back from a, a level three to a level one facility and moving forward, uh, talking to last hall and and, uh, hopefully they'll come up and we've met all the obligations and hopefully we can get back to, you know, the larger capacity and we can get everybody back from wherever they're at currently, get hours to our own facilities, so.
I stopped Friday at the jail to talk to Steve, he wasn't there, and I talked to Dan Kraft himself, and to me, he's getting along real well, he's happy to wait things going, has some new ideas, and he wants to run by the board tomorrow morning, and I think that'll be very favorable to all commissions, so.
Um, the other thing, I guess, uh, just to point out that, uh, the airport is having a, an emergency uh, disaster drill tomorrow evening, about the airport, with several responders, the first responder agencies and the hospital and all those, those kinda mechanisms.
So if you drive by tomorrow, don't be concerned.
Don't be concerned, it's not a, not a, you know.
This is only a drill.
I do think that the responders will be responding without their lights and sirens and, and kinda.
Yeah, they do have that on the radio.
But, but people could drive by and see fire trucks or whatever, rather than running.
If they happen to see a lot of commotion out there, that's what's going on tomorrow evening at the airport.
That's good, it's, they need to drill for those things, you know.
All required every, I think it's three years to the FAA. So, it meets those requirements and it meets some other, uh, obligations and requirements for other agencies as well, so.
Okay, further announcements?
We got one that's maybe not quite as fun as that, but, uh, it's fun for me, the, the Ramsey County person, you heard, uh, Stephen got the one, uh, two thousand twenty-one, one of the contours on there now. So, they've all won version two thousand nine, so.
Oh, we're, we're, we're upstate.
See what's been changed.
I'd like to see it.
And he changed the color scheme too, so the bodies are three.
That's always good, too.
Hey, and that was something that the joint board funded.
Yep.
Um, that was something through the International Water Institute, um, Chuck Pritz and his gang down in, in Fargo put those together and developed that was an, asked for a financial contribution from the joint board and and we thought that was a, a really a good way to give back to our, um, counties within the base of this. They're updating the light hour information, uh, for the counties, and he's currently working on hydro conditioning for, for, uh, determining wetlands and water sheds, so. Was a little pretty.
So that, that updated information then gives us a better look into when we develop watersheds and stuff for culverts and all those kinda things, or?
No.
It will, uh, check it back to me, see if we can have a time on, whether we can make that live yet.
Well.
Those watershed donation tool, the contours are, Steve adds up on your own person here.
That's a good, that's a good deal though, because anything we can add for more accuracy, to make sure we're doing, all those things right.
Yeah, well, it, it's a pretty remarkable story when you stop and think of all what they're doing with, uh, all the information that they have to gather and, and put into that, create that watershed or, you know, for that particular crossing in the road. Uh, you know, and they'll determine that and give you the, the flowages on it, the hydrology on it and all those kinda good things, and it really, uh, it works out nice, and we're looking forward to getting that material up and then put it into the, the data, so.
Yeah.
And it's something that, hey, you don't have to pay to subscribe to that website to have access to it. Just a, a little bit of a learning curve, and we're working on getting this, that, uh, tutorial up on our, our website, the joint board website, and how to use it and how to access it. So.
All right. One thing, I guess, and we're talking with Candy behind me, I heard here, and it's something I didn't think, but yeah, we, we actually do have to have a motion to actually pay the bill, since we don't have a meeting before, before the end of the month. Because we make our normal motion to pay for the normal bills, and they can go over that five thousand, but we can't, we have to have a motion in a second to then pay for the bill accordingly.
And make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to, uh, pay Andy Pur's.
One hundred and three, uh, twenty, sorry.
One, one, three, five, forty-seven, fourteen. Okay, further discussion. On the roll call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Pritz.
Aye.
Deese.
Aye.
Light on.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Any further announcements?
Um, we needed a, um, um, twenty twenty-two conference delegate, um, and the deadline was before today. Um, so.
Yeah, you can give me a actual look real quick.
Yep, so I, uh, put my name on there to be a voting delegate.
So you're gonna vote?
Yep.
Oh, pardon me.
Thank you.
Because they needed to know by three P M, so I just told her to.
Well, you know you'll be there.
Put my name in and, um.
Very.
And then we got, or Bo got, um, email on the opioid.
Yeah. Opioids, uh, first of the settlement payments should be coming in, so that's good. Um, we set up the portal, we set up a bank account, it's gonna drop into its own account and just start to gather dust there, uh. I think it, what was it, five thousand every month for thirteen years or something like that?
Two thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents.
So I'm a little off.
For thirteen years.
For thirteen years.
But.
Every month.
The state is also getting their cut, and that could benefit us indirectly. Um, cause they're getting their biggest portion of the pie, but if we put pressure on them to give services in our area, they benefit us, so.
Let me say, hopefully they'll take those dollars and put them in public health and mental health treatment services and things like that, addiction treatment services. That'd be helpful.
And I think that's the goal, and, uh, so far, nobody has a magic answer of how to spend the money. And state's attorneys and auditors all across the state are scratching their head, there's strings on it. But I think it's a good first step, and I think the other large manufacturers and producers will follow suit, um, soon, hopefully, soon being a relative term, it's like, uh, FEMA Federal Highway takes five or six years to be sued.
So, this portion of the dollars, is this from the lawsuit that we joined?
Yes, one of them.
One of them.
So this isn't the state lawsuit, this is one of the lawsuits through the private entity that we, the private attorneys, we decided to go with.
I believe so, yes.
So we, when we have received this money, if we weren't part of the lawsuit?
They dealt it.
You probably would have just got the state then, so in other words, going with them, probably was beneficial. At this point, we're not sure totally what it's gonna shake off, but probably was beneficial.
There's a lot of players and a lot of moving parts and a lot to keep track of, but the good news is some money is going to be coming back.
And who's making the payments right now? Who's, who is this, this is with?
Um.
I would say this is Jan.
Just one of them, okay. That'd be, yeah, Johnson is Johnson, Johnson. If they're hard to, the same job.
Hopefully we can come up with, uh, ways to help eradicate this problem from our society. Uh, you know, it, it, you know, it not only affects us right here in Double Lake, but statewide, nationwide, rural wide type of issue, like. You know, it's a lot of them making amounts.
Four hundred and thousand plus dollars over thirteen years, that's not nothing, it's a start at least.
Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight.
And we, and we just saw how comp, how interest works.
Yeah, yes, so that's a bank and gave some money and let's work with somebody, I'll get something done.
Already.
City gotta pay out too, so there is some big potential for maybe putting our heads together and finding some project.
Maybe we gotta work with our healthcare entities, hopefully, and maybe talk about mental health treatment facility, or maybe chip in, do something.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm glad that Steve.
Favorite, I thought it was.
We're a part of it and.
All right, very good. Anything else? We're gonna do the order.
Very good.
You ordered?
Yep.
You get to run.